This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, February 20th. Please stand for our implication, led by Councilmember Cory Penn, District One, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you right now, God, for today. We thank you for this meeting. We thank you right now, God, for the city of Mobile. Thank you for the administration, the mayor, his team. We thank you for the council right now, God. We thank you, Lord, for the Mobile Police Department, the Fire Department, God, and every city employee right now, God. We lift up our city before you. We declare, Lord, that it's safe, God, that it's growing, that every need is met, every desire is fulfilled in our city right now, God. We believe that it's safe right now, God, and we declare as done. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and that you're the flag of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the mission of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Daze.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of Rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our February 20th meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off of the vibrated position, the off the vibrated position. Any person that is desired to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is desired to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and retained to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicate that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wished to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be known to applause and or public outcry allowed. Final clerk.
Approval of minutes of February 6th and 14th.
Sum of second.
They're promptly moved in second in discussion. All their favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And approved.
Communications, some of your staffs.
Good morning. Good to see everyone here this morning. Just have a few announcements, and then we have an Officer of the Month and a Firefighter of the Month that we'll introduce to you. First announcement has to do with scrap towers. We have what we refer to as a Scrap Tower Amnesty Day. That's this coming Saturday, February 24th. It's from 8:00 AM until 11:00 AM. And this is where an individual can bring up to four towers to one of three drop-off points. The three drop-off points are Baumhauer Randall Park, Medal of Honor Park, and the Recycling Center on Museum Drive. This is a service that we're providing in conjunction with the Osprey Initiative and the Student Conservation Association. So anybody that has any old towers in their yard, want to get rid of them legally, is pleased bring them to these three drop-off locations this Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00. And it's up to four towers. Now, the next announcement has to do with the Mobile Parks and Recreation Department's Job Fair. We're actually having two job fairs, and this is looking for seasonal employees for this summer. A lot of hoping that a lot of students maybe will apply for these jobs. The first one is today, okay, and it's from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And that's going to be at Seals Recreation Center. And the next one is Saturday from 7:00 to 11:00, this Saturday, 7:00 to 11:00. So two job fairs, Mobile Parks and Rec. We're hoping to find somewhere between 50 and 75 people that are looking for summertime jobs, and the starting pay is $15.22 an hour. So the only thing that you have to do is, other than show up, bring a valid driver's license. You have to have a valid driver's license to be able to apply. So at this time, I'll call on Chief Prime to introduce the Officer of the Month.
Morning, Mayor, State Avenue Council.
Let's see. All right, I think we're there now. Good morning. So today, I have the privilege of bringing up Officer Jonathan Chris with the Mobile Police Department. He's been a member since 2018. This guy, what can I say? He is a very proactive officer. He works on the south side in the first precinct. In January, just a couple of highlights. He arrested three burglary suspects, cleared up more than about 10 burglaries with the three individuals. He also arrested an individual that had stabbed his estranged wife. Officer Chris had took it upon himself to locate the individual several days later and took him subsequently into custody. During that time of being proactive, he answered a total of 190 calls for service, arrested 11 felony suspects, more than 45 misdemeanor cases, all while working Mardi Gras, being proactive, and also training another investigator, or another officer, who was certainly a rookie at the department at this time. So with that being said, I just want to compliment this guy on a job well done for Officer of the Month, January 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Chief, listen, I'll introduce the Firefighter of the Month. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. So we have the privilege of introducing Driver Jeff Turner as the Employee of the Month for January with the Fire Department. Driver Turner has, he's worked with Mobile for 33 years now and is set to retire in January or in June of this year. He's been instrumental with the hazmat team where he currently serves. And additionally, he is the coordinator for the honor guard, which he has been pretty much for the last four years, I believe. And they stand silently at the retirees' funerals. This is a service that they volunteer, that we provide to all of our retirees upon their death, that we make sure that we have last bit of standing guard over them. But Jeffrey has been an outstanding employee and able to present, and glad that he's been our Firefighter of the Month.
Yeah, congratulations. Also, congratulations on your retirement.
That concludes my remarks, Mr. President.
Public hearings. Today's a public hearing to declare the structures at 1826 Idell Street, 1863 Motte Drive South, 1508 Lemon Street, 1053 Rotterdam Street, and 2704 Greenback Drive, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular sad items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? Is so you may come down to the podium by stating your name. If not, these particular public hearings just close.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, John Kozlinski.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Greetings to the mayor and the mayor's staff and to the Honorable CJ Smalls, President of the City Council. My name is John Kozlinski. My address is 1710 Old Canal Street. Erica Street and I represent Port City Samaritans, Ryan's Refuge, and all of those who are involved in ministering to the homeless community. We do not come here seeking recognition, but we came for an amazing event that took place at the Theodore Church of God at the Cold Spell that happened several weeks ago. But we come to give recognition. From January 17th to January 25th, we managed the cold weather event at Theodore Church of God. And I want to give you some brief statistics before I share who we would like to recognize. We planned and organized and teamed with so many people and organizations, it can be very difficult to mention them in three minutes. The Mobile County Emergency Management Agency, Red Cross, United Way, Franklin Health, Healthcare for the Homeless, Theodore Church of God, Revive Church, Revive 217, First Baptist of Chickasaw, Port City Refuge, St. Louis Baptist, Life Church of Mobile, Life Church of Hurley, Mississippi, Evangelist Eddie Robertson, Anchored by Grace, Homeless in Mobile, Agapi Life Gardens, Waterfront Mission, Wings of Life, Mission of Hope. Without any significant money, we were able to house 187 people over the course of eight days. We had a maximum of 148 at one time. We had 984 bed nights. We fed 2,760 hot meals. Breakfast, lunch, and dinner was provided. 17 people went to drug rehab. Eight people went to transitional housing. We paid $4,500 in hotel rooms for women and children and families with no pets. We sent nine people home on buses after making sure they had a family and/or a job to go to. The average bus tickets was $170 with a total of $1,530. There were over 200 volunteers and supporters that were involved in this endeavor. Now, the most remarkable part of this week was having 148 displaced people living 12 inches apart, and we had an incredible amount of peace at the event. There was only one verbal altercation in eight days of this event. If you took 150 pastors and put them all in that space, I guarantee you, we would have had a lot more arguments than what took place at that event. We had just a tremendous outpouring from the community. But what we recognized the most, was the most prominent, was the police department, both the Mobile Police Department and the Mobile County Sheriff's Department. They were absolutely amazing. I know we had between 24 and 28 calls to the two of the site, and only two of them were for any problems that were there. We had someone who was, had mental illness and would not allow the others to slept, to sleep. So she had to be taken to another facility, and then someone was trying to come in who was completely intoxicated. Other than that, we had the police officers who were coming, bringing in those that were displaced or were coming out of the cold. It was remarkable. And the attitude of the police department, the compassion that they shared, the times that they walked through the facility and were touched by those. I can't tell you how many people.
One second, one second. Counsel, can I give them additional one minute? Okay, one more minute.
What I found remarkable is, you know, there's some conflict between those that are homeless and the police department. It's a difficult job for the police, and those that are homeless don't understand, you know, their role. But there was some healing that took place. I can't tell you how many people who were displaced, who were touched by the love and compassion that was showed by the police department. So, so Mayor, I just want to tell you that your force was amazing. The Mobile County Sheriff's Department was amazing. And I just want to let you know that the lives were changed. The entire community came through in such a mighty and miraculous way. And we just want to encourage you guys to continue on the path. Some amazing things are happening, and we just want to recognize so many times, police departments, when there's something bad, everybody wants to count down on it. But when something's good, everybody's silent. I don't want to be silent. Both police departments were amazing, wonderful people, compassionate, and I just want to give them recognition. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much, man. I do have a question. You said that you all have purchased some bus tickets. Where did y'all purchase? Where did they head to?
Most of them went home.
Where is home?
Okay, so went to Arizona, Texas, Birmingham, Florida, all over, all over states, states from all over. There was, I'm going to say 40% were from Alabama. Most of those were only a bus ticket away from getting their lives back together. We've had many people who contacted us, let us know that they got home safe, and they're now back to work. They're with their families. And it, all it took was a bus ticket. One of them was $55 to send him back up to Birmingham. And so, you know, we're feet on the ground. We spend 24/7 in that environment, and we know those that are there. And we could send a lot more back to their families. We could send that if we had the resources. But we're, you know, we don't have money. We're just starting, and we've had a tremendous impact. And all of those are given by our supporters. It's just been amazing. And all of this took place within 48 hours. We were able to do all this within a 48-hour time period, which is miraculous. It's only God himself that did that.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And also like to say thank you for what you've said about our police department, the Sheriff's Department. So often, they don't get the recognition they deserve. And so thank you for your recognition of them. Appreciate it.
Pastor Valena Green.
Good morning, Pastor Valena Green, 603 Delaware Street, the Downey Bay Community. I come to you today to speak about servants and the people serving in our community. Well, well, as you know, we have someone in our community that is a youth. She's 23 years old. Her name is Jimson Lee Jones. She started the prom dress piece a long time ago when she was a freshman at McGill. And then on, when she went on to Alabama. She's currently getting ready to go to University of Alabama's Law School. Well, I want her to be recognized along with some other people that we've overlooked. She served in each, in every one of your districts by serving needy girls with prom dresses, mostly brand-new prom dresses. She's also assisted the CAPPAS, Mr. Terrell Washington, with supplying him with prom dresses to take out at Blunt and Viger during the pandemic and before. Also as well, she's also doing voter registration. She's currently getting ready to go in the jails and register inmates and registering the homeless that have addresses to vote. Along with the whole four years when she was at McGill, she served with me and a lady named Kathy Traywick by serving the homeless every morning, the aging, the ex-offender. She worked on prison reform with me. So I ask you to recognize her. She's been serving this community a long time. I hear y'all say all kinds of things about the youth and that young age group. She is one that serves, has served, and is currently served. She's one of the young women, the only young women serving in illegal women voters at 23 years of age that's willing to go in the jails and register people to vote. So I think she needs to be recognized. Her freshman year, when she was at McGill, Channel 15 did a story on her and the prom dress piece, and it was called "Lily Pad Love." So when she went on to Bama as a political science major, she passed out clothes to needy young women at the University of Alabama. When she was at McGill, she passed out clothes to you, to underprivileged girls with no help from McGill. Everything had to come through my organization. So I ask you once again, let's recognize some folks, some young folks that's really doing something in the community, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Lofton III.
Y'all pardon me, counsel. Good morning, counsel, mayor's staff. My name is Alex Jerome Lofton II. I'm here to address the proliferation of the youth and gun violence within the city. We live in a day and age where the technology has afforded us, and more specifically, our children, the ability to Google and watch anything that comes to their young and impressionable minds, no matter how inappropriate, pornographic, or violent. For 30 years, the music industry has made trillions of dollars by pushing and promoting this, the most vile, vulgar, destructive gangster music from a small subculture of the African-American community to the world and abroad. Not only has this poisoned the minds of our youth and our community, it's poisoned the minds of the people around us who think this represents our morals and our values. We're at a war for the hearts and souls of our children. They are constantly bombarded with images of violence, sex, selling, and drug use. Young black kids in impoverished areas are more susceptible to the ill effects of this propaganda because the images being expressed within this music happens right outside of their front door, and in some sad cases, right in their own homes. So how do we combat this? How do we stop billion-dollar media corporations from making billions of dollars by simply poisoning our communities? I wish I had the answers, but I know what we can do to mitigate the damaging effects. Our kids need to know and see that there's an option, another outlet to express their artistry, another way to say this is not who we are and this is what we are about. And we do this through spoken word and poetry. We can fight this need. We can fight this war on two fronts, from above and below. Nothing resonates in your soul quite as much as being told by a child that you're doing wrong, especially when they're right. The benefits of having poetry and spoken word programs within the education systems are endless. But during my lack of time, I'll just share a few. Everywhere I go, I hear educators say reading and writing scores are atrocious and getting worse every day. All these kids do, all the kids want to do is rap. So why not channel this in a more positive and substantive way? My colleague and I, Dr. Walton, sitting behind me, have been all over the country doing poetry workshops at group home mentoring programs in schools that have had a profound and immediate impact. Above and beyond all the academic benefits that these programs offer, they align directly with the international standards. But it's more important about the life lessons that we teach them. A person's ability to achieve and become a success is directly correlated with their ability to express themselves and let people know who they are and what they're about. It's all of our presentations. It'll be the difference between you getting a job or not getting a job. It's different between you getting a ticket or going to jail or possibly being killed. I would venture to say the majority of people in this room, especially the elected officials, are where they are and have their position because of their spoken word abilities. So I say, let them have.
Counsel, can I grant one more minute? One minute, summarize.
So give them an opportunity to have what you have. We need to, well, let me cut all that. In short, I have several programs that myself and Dr. Walton have put together. One is initially stop the violence right now, Youth Poetry Slam. I've done several of these, and the response has been amazing. We need to give these kids a platform to show that this is not what we're about. And what it does, it helps this fight on two fronts. It shows us adults and the people that look. But these kids, it shows them what we're doing to them, and it gives them an outlet to show, okay, we're failing them, and they're scared. But it also shows their peers that there's another way. And we can do this simply, the majority of my overhead comes from securing a venue and giving out cash prizes. I use cash prizes as an incentive because I, and I don't want to charge the people. I want to give them no excuse not to come. And I think this will make a bold and immediate impact if we can do this in our school system or in after-school programs or in summer programs. I'm currently talks with my friend, my sister Keisha Brown over here. She's reached out to me about doing some stuff. So, but I wanted to bring this to you guys. So, because I think if we can get this and put this program up together during Poetry Workshop and these slams, we can make an immediate impact on these kids.
And have you reached out to the school board?
No, I haven't. No, I haven't.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, it sounds great, and I think I have heard Keisha talk about it you before. And she said it was, she was, had brought some attention to what you was trying to do. I also advise you to also to reach out to the school board because, again, I mean, they got the kids, you know, wartime, then the city actually happened too. But what you're saying sounds real great.
And before I go, just because it's long the vein, this Thursday, I'm having, we're having a Black History Scholar Bowl competition at the Calvary Jail on DIP at 6:00 PM.
When's this?
This is a Black History program. We have a Black History Scholar.
When? When?
Thursday, 6:00 PM at the Calvary Jail.
Okay.
And what we're doing, we have students from Viger, LaFlore, and Blunt competing on their history of, their knowledge of Black history. And I think, I just really want to get the people out there, and I have some special poetic friends that's going to be sharing how powerful this spoken word can be in their lives. So I'm asking you, just use your full pick and try to get the word out there. I'm inviting you all to come out.
If you have a PDL, if you can just share with our City Clerk office.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
We can just, you know, distribute it through our e-mails and everything.
I should, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Daze and Mr. Carroll.
Mr. Lofton. Mr. Lofton.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Thank you for being with us today and telling us about this program. I'd like to mention, and I don't know if you've heard of this program, but there's a nationwide program called Poetry Out Loud.
Yeah.
It's a national arts education program that encourages the study of great poetry by offering free educational materials and a dynamic recitation competition for high school students across the country. This program helps students master public speaking skills, build self-confidence, and learn about literary history and contemporary life. Now, if you're interested in this program or allying your effort with this program, I'd suggest you get in touch with the Alabama State Council.
I'm quite familiar with it. I've actually been posting it and promoting that event on Facebook and IG for the Mobile Arts Council.
You talked to the Arts Council.
Well, they took me the information. I'm familiar with it. And I've actually participated in that event in other cities before as a judge for the poetry or actually hosting the event. So, but the thing I want to do, I want to use this in a more localized area. So when I do with my poetry slam, I give them writing prompts. We want to, we want to focus in on what we talking about. I don't censor them. The only thing I tell you is don't use any profanity, any cuss word, and no vulgarity. And I want you to express yourself, and you guys will be amazed what these kids come up with. And I think it's going to be vital to let the world hear and see what's coming out of them that's going to make the change. So I tell them, look, what is this violence? How does it affect you? That's the only prompt I give them, and it's amazing what happens.
Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're a lot of years away from poetry night on top of the holiday.
Yeah, you and your brother. Yeah, crazy. I, they gave me my first job hosting poetry.
Everybody in the city where we used to sponsor these events.
17 years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, right about 17, 20 years ago, when we used to sponsor poetry events for youth in our city to where youth could learn this and hear this. You mentioned a program. I'd like to see the budget. You know, I'd like you to put a budget together, a business plan of what you are trying to do and accomplish as opposed to just talking about it and actually present it to me and possibly other members on the council. It's going to take a lot of new ideas in a lot of different places to, you know, with a lot of different venues for people that do a lot of different things. When I say youth, because everybody isn't a sports guy or basketball. Everybody doesn't, you know, swim or do different things. So there's a need for different opportunities. So if you could put together a budget and submit it and let us see what you're talking about and see if there's a possibility of any help from here. Could you do that for us?
Yes, sir. I should be.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Lofton, for coming. I have seen your work, you know, through, at the time, when I was the director of the Boys and Girls Club. You came in and worked with some of our youth there with the poetry. And so thank you so much for your service and what you provide to our youth. I think it's very vital. I think it's very important so much. Can come out, like you said, you know, to learn to be able to articulate and be able to share their feelings and emotion through words is needed during these times and just period. And that's the reason why I think it's vital for some of the things that you say you need it, you know, a place, revenue, cash, these different things. That was the reason why it was so important for me to try to put a preform in place because there's a lot of organizations are doing things with space. And to be honest, some of them might not have a program that's taking place during a certain hour. And your program could be that place, can be a part of that. We will be having another preform on March the 1st, and I'm inviting you to come out and be a part at the DOT's Community Center.
Was it back in August where we were last time?
We'll be at.
The Tiggers?
It will be at the, in Trenton Gardens.
Okay.
At the DOT's Community Center.
Yeah.
And so I think it's vital to hear your voice and hear like, and that's the importance of coming together. Every person that talked today, going forward to, thank you to the church and all the service. When you hear all these things taking place, I feel that we as a community, as a city, has to come together and see how can we leverage and support those needs. And if we learn how to do that together, then we'll have a stronger city because I didn't know about that service that was taking place. That's amazing what they're doing. That's amazing what you're doing. And there's some things that we can do if we had a plan in place to say, these are things that are taking place. So that person who has a building, they say, well, Mr. Lofton need a place, and I have the building, why not connect? But when you don't know that, information. But when you don't know that information and we're working in silos, then we're not, we're not able to provide it. And that's why these conversations need, so, need to take place. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And whatever I could do to support moving forward, you know, I'm always gonna be there to support.
Thank you, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. Lofton.
Reggie Hill regarding Resolution 08-154, 155, 156, 21159, and 6173.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I want to combine 08-154 and 08-156. These are both the forensic identification software agenda items, which equate to about a hundred thousand dollars. I hate to beat a dead horse here, but for about a month now, I've been coming to addressing the matters of how we look at surveillance and these practices within public safety, and we haven't had any response from either the administrative or legislative body. So it would just be good to know what is the intent, how have these been used, are these reoccurring? What has been the basis or the results or the advantage or continuum in this process? And what are we actually doing to circumvent some of these matters that we see weekend and week out throughout the city of Mobile? The next matter I want to look at is 08-155. This is the twenty one thousand dollars for the billboard advertising of the art museum. I'm always for the expansion of tourism throughout the city of Mobile as well as preserving those heirlooms that really make our culture unique here. However, I think that we need to be more cognizant of how we're expending our resources, especially for something of this nature. I think this is a great idea, but I would like to see us use these same type of practices to target matters that I believe are more beneficial for the city at this moment, particularly as it relates to housing matters or the youth violence piece that has been so reoccurring here even at the podium. So if we can just have some understanding of how that came about and what do we see the return being for the city, that'd be great to know as well. Let's look at, please, 21-159. And this is the thirty five thousand for the Heroes Plaza design closeout. To the best of my knowledge, what I've seen, we've already paid quite a pretty penny into this project. And so I'm just needing some clarity as to why we're paying for the design as well. I've seen different markups and examples placed out publicly and throughout the media, which already have a design in place. So maybe there's just some wording matters that need to be considered. But whatever that is, I think we can have some clarity put forth and it'd be necessary for the public. Again, that's the thirty five thousand dollars for the Heroes Plaza's design closeout. And lastly, 60-173, this is one of the two appropriations for the mothers involved against gun violence. I'm elated to see that these resources are actually on the agenda. We avoided this topic at pre-meeting, as well as we've avoided it thus far throughout this meeting, but there was a weekend of tragically fatal events. And we need to invest in projects that are data proven and actually work if we want to see the changes here within the city. So my question with that would be, is there anything that would prevent this body from receiving these resources? And what would be the timeline? Because we also know in times past where entities haven't approved for resources in the same fashion years ago, and they've yet to see any of those. So many of those matters can be addressed, it'd be greatly appreciated. Thank you for being on the floor.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
President.
Uh, Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, the last matter, I know you speak that we avoided the incidents that occurred. I haven't avoided any incidents that occurred. I had spoken on my, on my personal account about the incidents that have occurred over this weekend. I speak on every time, I talk to the news, that we have to do whatever we can to stop. I just spoke about it just now. I spoke to, I'm marching with Ms. Hill, every moment I can to speak on these issues. So that particular information is not true, because I'm speaking on the issue at all times. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over, 64016, 64017. Consider modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 5041 Range Line Crossing Drive and for property located at 3220 Airport Boulevard.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions held over, 21153, authorized contractor Harris Contracting Services for new pickleball and tennis courts at Crawford, Murphy, and Stotts Parks.
So moved.
Second.
Promptly moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolution is held over, 08154, approved purchase order to a forensic software company for annual renewal of forensic identification software. 08155, approved purchase order to Lamar Companies for billboard advertising for an art museum. 08156, approved purchase order to Magna Forensics USA Inc. for annual renewal of subscription for forensic software. 08157, approved purchase order to Premier Southeast Sales and Service for Wood Chipper. 08158, approved purchase order to Vulcan for street sign holders for traffic engineering. 21159, authorized contract amendment revoked for Heroes Plaza design closeout. 21160, authorized contract with Rec Desk LLC for parks and recreation software services. 37161 and 162 are considering applications of Roosevelt Robertson to operate a shuttle service and Mountain Taxi doing business at Sunset Taxi to operate a taxi service.
So moved. Second.
They're promptly moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 37164 through 6183.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
37164, recommend approvals of the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, off premises only license to Big Mo Food Mart on Michigan Avenue. 40165, 166, 167, 168, and 169 are declaring destructions at 2704 Greenback Drive, 1826 Idell Street. 1863, Mont Drive South, 1508 Lemon Street, 1053 Rotterdam Street, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. 58170 and 171 are declaring weeds noxious and assessing cost for removal of repeat weed lean group. 1653 and 68. 60172, approve award a special bonus to the officer of the month. 60173, 174, and 175 are determining appropriations to mothers involved against gun violence in Providence Foundation, serves a public purpose, and authorizing payment. 60183, approve award a special bonus to the firefighter of the month.
So moved.
Second.
They're promptly moving second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 21176.
For council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced, 08177 through 6182.
By council rules, these resolutions will also lay over for one week.
Announcements.
Uh, District One, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, we had the annual Trinity Garden Parade in District One with an estimated of thirty three thousand. Some people attended this parade, it was pretty chilly, pretty cold. So I'm sure we probably would have had more people in attendance. It was great seeing so many families, this probably, I believe, the biggest block party in the world. I really want to truly thank the administration, the mayor and his team, the police, MPD, my, the city staff, city employees, just everyone that helped put this together. It's truly amazing event. Of course, the incident occurred outside the parade route. And that's what we've been talking about the whole time. How can we create change? How can we stop the violence? And we have seen other incidents that occurred this weekend. That's the reason why we have to come together. If we do not come together as a community, I went to a meeting on the other day, and I was talking to some individuals, and everyone was saying, this is what we doing, and I keep saying the same thing, that's what you're doing, till we come together. Ms. Hill, she did an event, a networking event, it was so powerful, because she brought, she wanted to bring everybody. That's why I love what she's doing, because she's not about herself, she's not pointing and saying, it's just me. Let me just do it. No, she says, look, let's bring everybody to the table, and that's why I can support organizations like that. Because she said, let's bring everybody to the table and let's figure out how to do it together. Anytime a group says, I'm the only one that have the answer, that's the problem. We have to do this together to solve these issues. We're gonna need everyone, ideas, and how we can take those ideas and move forward. Now, I was a former youth pastor, and I talked to one of the, it was a pastor who had one of the largest churches in America. I said, man, how you grew, how you became one of the largest churches in America? How did, how did you do that? He said, most people, when they talk to adults, they, they always try to sell to the adults. He said, no, I started investing in my youth. He said, that's how I became the largest church in America, because I started investing in my young people. He said, when I started investing in them, they brought the parents. They came. And I believe we have to do the same thing, so that's why I believe we have to have a plan for our youth, and we have to do it together. So hopefully, that will come. Thursday, I'm having a meeting at Tomville Library with all senior pastors or their representatives from District One. I sent a letter out to all churches in my districts. And then the reason for that meeting, I want all the pastors to come together, because it's time for us as leaders to adopt schools, to put programs in place, to be mentors. And now some of these churches are already doing those things, but I need to have that on paper as well. And so we will be doing that meeting at 6:00 PM. So if you haven't received that letter, that mean that maybe your church had changed the address or anything. So if you know anyone, please let them know that we will be having that meeting at 6:00 PM. And then we have our peace forum on March the first at the Dots Community Center. And more information will be coming from that. Thank you, Rob.
March, March the second.
March the second, my apologies, March the second. We have to come together, and we can do it together, because we are stronger together. Thank you, Mr. President. And last thing, I know, the Alcomin fridge, when you say, you know, he start talking. Last thing, and I said this during the pre-council. Viger High School, they had an era with the score. And I talked to the director, I call, I was upset, they said, Corey Penn, why are you calling? And that's in the city of Preacher. I said, well, I have students that attend Viger, because that's a signature high school, and any student that live in Mobile County can go to school. So I have students that live in my district that attend Viger. I can call as a council member and ask. If I ask that question, I called the national headquarters, I called the local state court, and they told me it was an era, but they can't change it because of guidelines. So we have young people out there doing the right thing, right thing. And I said, you forget, before athlete is student. So that mean they have to have the grades, they have to have the behavior, they doing the right thing. And they can't move on because of adult error? That's a problem, guys. We have to change those rules, and we got to change those guidelines. And even if it doesn't happen in the city of Mobile, I'm gonna say something, I'm gonna stand for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
You sure?
I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President, very briefly here. Today, we approved a contract to improve the pickleball courts at Stotts Park. This will expand their pickleball operation to three courts in total, and I challenge anybody else in the city to, that has pickleball courts, to get the sort of attendance we see out at Stotts Park. It is amazing how many people use these facilities, and I'm very proud to be able to scratch and claw and come up with this approximately five hundred thousand dollars to expand what they are currently doing out there. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. District Five, Councilman Davis.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. It being Black History Month, I have another quote from the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King today. If you go and you ask Google to show you the important quotes of Dr. King, it's unbelievable. There's a huge list. But before I get to this one, I'm gonna give you some preface on it. I think it's important that we all remember that we live in a nation of immigrants. The only natives we pushed off of their lands, the Native Americans are the only natives. Everyone else is an immigrant in this country. What's important to the country, to the state, to the city, is that whether, even though we're all immigrants, we're all together now. We're all together now. And so, any effort to hold yourself up higher than anybody else, or say you're more entitled than anybody else, any effort to demean anybody else because of their ethnicity is un-American. It's just that simple, it's un-American. And not only is it un-American, it's not helpful, it doesn't help us all. So here's Dr. King. "We may have all come in different ships, but we are in the same boat now. What's good for one of us is good for all of us, what's bad for one of us is bad for all of us." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. District Two, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements, Mr. President, especially after Councilman Penn and the rendition of Fred Richardson. And Joel's speaking this morning, I don't need to say anything.
All right, thank you, Councilman Carroll. District Six.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to make the announcement that our next meeting, um, for District Six will be March 26th, and we'll have a location laid out in the newsletter when it goes out this week, so just be on the lookout for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Wood. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilman Penn, I wasn't going to tease you about sounding a whole lot like your predecessor, but there you go. But thank you for what you said, I appreciate it. I wanted to just follow up also on the parades that we had on Saturday. Mine was in Mobile Terrace, it's the Mobile Terrace Motorcade, and it happened following the Trinity Gardens Parade. Ours was not quite as large, but it was still a good turnout, especially given that the weather was kind of iffy. We had a lot of great entries in the parade, we were in the city council float, wonderful participation. Thank you so much to the police officers who were there to make sure that everyone stayed safe. We had volunteers from the, of course, the neighborhood who organized the parade, many thanks to them. And of course, our council staff, Lisa Lambert and her folks, who put everything together for us every year for the entire Mardi Gras season. So thank you to everyone who came out and participated. And of course, after the parade, the Public Works people were out on Monday morning, bright and early, cleaning up in the neighborhood, just like they do downtown. So thank you, everyone, for what you have done and for the support. And that's all from District Seven, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. And on March the 25th, six o'clock PM, I am hosting a community meeting with the North DIP and Maysville Community. Please mark your calendars, it will be held at the Maryvale Elementary School, which is located on Darpan Island Parkway. And again, that is for the North DIP and Maysville Community. And next week, I will announce some more community meetings. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
They're promptly moving second in another discussion.